One, I'd like to call the order of the January ninth meeting of the County Commission. And we stand for special allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. This time I'm going to put it all through Commissioner President. Stan, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Smith, do we have any more in the public? Do you recognize anyone? So we'll pass that. You of the bill.
At this time, I'm moved to approve the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that motion.
Motion. The board is second to approve the bill. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. And from the assessor's office, we have a tax correction.
Good morning. That's their error in the amount of two ninety-three fifty-eight.
How much was it?
Two ninety-three fifty-eight.
At this time, I'm moved to approve the tax correction list in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I will second that motion.
We're second to approve the tax correction list. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. And while you're there, Connie, as you are, so that brings it right to you.
I brought Chris with me this morning because she will be able to answer any questions. I'm going to pass out a memo that she had practiced for you to see of the defense that happened with the Brett's school property. It has quite a history.
Oh, yeah, it does, after looking through all this stuff.
In response, this is in response to questions regarding the Brett's school property currently assessed to Preston County Commission at a commission meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In September eleven, two thousand eleven, the ownership of the Brett's school property was questioned. By letter dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, to Mel Snyder, prosecuting attorney, the assessor requested his opinion regarding the ownership of this parcel. The above referenced parcel was purportedly conveyed from the county commission of Preston County, West Virginia, a statutory corporation, to Brett's Community Association Incorporated, a corporation by date, dated December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four, of record in D book five sixteen, page six ten. However, the existence of this entire entity could not be confirmed with a search of records in the Preston County clerk's office or with a search of the records in the West Virginia Secretary of State's office. By letter dated October twenty-first, two thousand eleven, Mel Snyder, prosecuting attorney, provided a legal opinion regarding the ownership of the Brett's school property. This letter indicates that a copy was provided to Preston County Commission. His primary conclusion was that the nineteen eighty-four deed was not effective because Brett's Community Association Incorporated had not been legally created at that time. According to a search of the West Virginia Secretary of State's records, Brett's Community Association Incorporated became a legal entity November twentieth, two thousand twelve. Please note that this entity did not exist prior to November twelfth, twentieth, two thousand twelve, and specifically did not exist at the time of the December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four deed. In a letter dated November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, to Janice Coles, Mel Snyder, prosecuting attorney, further addressed the ownership of the Brett's school property. His primary conclusion was that the nineteen eighty-four deed was not effective because Brett's Community Association Incorporated had not been legally created at that time. His opinion was that the Brett's school property was still owned by the county commission. This letter also references a November fourth, two thousand thirteen commission meeting and indicates that a copy of the letter was provided to Preston County Commission. A legal status and opinion and a legal status and options for Brett's school property was provided to Preston County Commission by letter dated January seventh, two thousand fourteen, from Mel Snyder, prosecuting attorney. This letter described five options for the commission with regard to the property. This letter states that its purpose was is to document his comments, his comments at a commission meeting the prior day. Again, he states that the county commission owns the property. By letter dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, assessor informed Mel Snyder, prosecuting attorney, that the owner for the property would be listed as Preston County Commission for the two thousand fourteen tax year per his letter of November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. A copy of this letter was provided to the Preston County Commission. By lease agreement dated August third, two thousand fifteen, of record in D book seven eighty, page five fifty-four, the county commission of Preston County of West Virginia, a statutory corporation and political subdivision of the state of West Virginia, leased to the Brett's Community Association, a West Virginia nonprofit corporation, the Brett's school property is described in exhibit A. Exhibit A is a copy of the deed to the county commission of, to the county commission of Preston County, describing the two of formerly known as Brett's schools. No release of this lease was found of record. Based on the above information, the county commission has been aware of the issue with the property since two thousand eleven. Since the commission leased the property to the Brett's Community Association in two thousand fifteen, they apparently believe that they own the property at that time.
Thank you, Connie, and just for all your work.
Do you have any questions, Chris, to help you understand or answer?
My question was, the question I have about is, there's that. The Board of Education screwed this up to begin with, honestly, because they owned the piece of property. And in the deed books, it shows where they gave it to the Brett's community. And then they realized they couldn't do that, or whatever, I have no idea. But they can give it to the county commission, so they gave it to the county commission. I have to look them all the way back to the original record where Elkins, Cogan, Cole gave, had the record. It says it's to be used for school purposes, but there's no revocation. Like a lot of things says, once it's not a school, it reverses back to previous ownership and all that. My thought is, if it's not, can it ever do anything with it, truthfully?
Again, that's something you need to talk to an attorney about.
Because if that being the case, we couldn't even sell it. Because if it's not going to be a school, you know what I mean?
I know.
It clearly states in that deed.
That was in a prior deed or the original deed?
It's the original deed that was given to the Board of Education. And it was given to the Board, the Valley District of, the Board of, the Board of Education, the Valley District of Preston County, to be specific.
So I think truly what makes sense is we do need a legal opinion on that original deed. My personal opinion is that if they failed to take action to correct once Mel Snyder brought everything forward, if we can even do that, we need to look at the first thing first. Then we just need to take the action to finalize the transfer to Brett's.
Yeah, why wasn't the deed where the county commission gave it to?
Well, I think they.
Ever revoked? I mean, there's no revocation anywhere I could find. So, I mean, for anybody looking.
Mel Snyder's opinion was that was an ineffective deed, so it doesn't need to be revoked.
Organization, so it never.
It was not Brett's Community Association.
Is that filed any, is that recorded anywhere?
What?
The Mel's letter.
It's not recorded, no, but the county commission has a copy of it.
Right, so that's.
And I think that's where the confusion is.
And it should be in the minutes as well, because.
I found, we have all that in our ballot.
Yes, it should be in, especially where he gave options on the property.
So that's very clear there.
In two thousand fourteen, he gave five different options. And he presented that at a county commission meeting, and then he followed it up with a letter.
And then they never took action to deed it back.
Well, actually.
Well, they did a lease in two thousand fifteen, so that's saying I own it, so.
Well, there's a question as to whether the county commission can even tell them.
Yes.
And that, and that's, that's what it boils down to, because that original deed says it, I mean, it clearly states. It's to be used for school purposes. Now, it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't, like a lot of places, it'll have, if this ever.
It'll have a refer.
Doesn't happen, then it reverses back to previous ownership. So I've seen it happen with, you know, with stuff.
If I could have amendments, so the only part from my research that was unclear. In two thousand and twelve, they tried to deed it to the Brett's Community Organization, Inc. What happened there?
Okay, there was a deed, but that was not for the school property, that was for the road to the school property.
The road, the county commission was clearly given the road when they built the school. That was part of that original deed, Elkins, Cogan, Cole did. It clearly states the county would get this piece to be used as a road, essentially, to get to the school.
The quick plan deed that was done was not for the school property, it was for the road. It was taken to court, and that deed was voided by court order.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's a red situation.
Yeah.
So that deed was specifically voided by court order.
Well, thank you guys for all your work. I think we need to go back to my original opinion that we should send it to an expert in our county to get a legal opinion.
I agree.
Brown, Devol, and what is it, Devol, Brown, and Everhart, is that? That's my opinion.
Next problem is that I just want to make sure we can do whatever with it, because we might get stuck with it like a loadstone around our neck, I'd ruin it all.
The legislature needs to change the history, you would have to have consideration for the land, but that may have changed, I think that may have changed.
There was a situation, I know Long County. I gotta go back and look at research for the bill. I think it passed, I remember. Long County was a big pusher of this.
That's the one.
It was to get the county to be able to give property, because they had, they were the same situation. One couple of schools they had gotten from the Board, their Board of Education, and they wanted to be able to give them to these senior centers or community centers and just say, here, you got it, we don't want anything to do with it. And so we just need to follow up, make sure that's passed.
I make a motion to move forward with contracting with Everhart, Brown, Snyder, or Devol to look at the Brett's property.
Question, can we do that today?
Without a proper attain or letter, probably not. Why don't we table it for another week, and we're getting updated, engagement letter?
Right, we can, we can move forward.
We didn't even forward, I had no problem, I have a napkin, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say permission, so second.
I'm pushing forward, the second, so you move forward with our property discussion with the, what is it, Everhart?
Brown.
Brown and Devol. There we go. I have a.
Yes.
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 I will get an updated retention letter.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, please?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. This is a very confusing.
Well, yeah.
And we're just trying to strike one off.
I'd like to, that one seems to me to make, having looked at the other properties, most of them are, have been bad because of the way they're situated. Now, I will say there was one down in Newburgh, where someone had built on the property.
Yeah, I know.
So it's actually somebody built on the property, they've added to their house. So that's a situation. Or we can, we can be like Kingwood and just ignore it. Or we can be mean and do what the lower parts mean, you tear it down.
And people do that, but you know.
I'm not lying, that's what they do, they keep it for it, they have, they own property and people are using it, and they're just loving it. Anyway. We now have a report from Linda Huggins, our county clerk, on her CFT voting policy.
Good morning, Linda.
Good morning. This, I, I like gave you coffee, I meant to email you. This is just normal business, that for every election, we, we have, the commission allows for this emergency absentee voting process to be, to be allowed. And you, we, we set the restrictions, so there are some circumstances that, you know, we could go beyond or decline or whatever. But we, we set, we have set the radiance, it's a thirty mile radius from county seat. So six days prior to an election, if someone is admitted to the hospital or healthcare facility at the last minute, and they didn't get a chance to absentee vote or vote, they can still request an absentee ballot, and two appointed emergency ballot commissioners will deliver the ballot to that person in the healthcare facility, we allow them to vote it and secure, securely bring it back to the county clerk's office, so.
Now, has anything changed for last election on the policy?
No, nothing's changed in a few years.
This has been this way for a while.
Okay, well, at this time, I'm moved to approve the emergency absentee voting policy for Preston County, West Virginia.
I'm second that.
I have a motion for second to approve the emergency absentee voting policy, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes.
So let's sign my call.
Thank you. Please, thank you.
Let's sign it, we need, we need.
We have such a unique thing in here.
Just your signature, one of all with me to. We did two copies. And I actually posted this to the secretary of state.
Oh, yeah, I figured, yeah.
All right, we don't have any minutes at this time.
At this time, I'm moved to approve the state settlement list for December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, for Beether and Darnell.
I will second that motion.
I'm second to approve the state settlements. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes.
We've done the PIBs.
At this time, I make a motion to dispense with the readings of the proceedings in vacation and enter them into record in open court session for December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three through January third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'm second to approve the PIBs on September fourth, four, seven, twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, and January third, two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Producer, Commissioner, old business at this time, kind of dismal business.
Brett's.
All right, new business.
Yes. So item A is Craig's active shooter training, which we were communicating with Tim Curry, with the City of Rich Corps on helping us do. On that, after some conversations Tim had at the Preston County Sheriff's Office, which I wish the sheriff would have reached out to me, because I've reached out too many times on the active shooter training. It is the sheriff's opinion that they have ample instructors and training to do the active shooter training themselves.
That being said, Dan, we will, we need to have a meeting with the sheriff that he will be here, I'd say next week, and we'll set up, we'll see what resources he has available, and then move forward with it done.
Yeah, so I know, so I know.
Let's get in here next week for.
I know we wouldn't be able.
To bring information to us.
I know, I know we wouldn't be able to do Alice training, because we're not buying their program, but they could do a, it wouldn't be certified, but they could do a form of.
I believe they said that.
Here, here's the thing, here's the thing.
What's that?
Whether it's.
My understanding was that they are trained with the creative active shooter training, but I don't know that to the shore of the speech.
Filing, filing is. And here, and here's.
Have the conversation.
Okay, and here, and here's the thing, whether it's crazy, crease, crash, whatever you want.
Right.
Alice, either or, as long as the train's done, that's the main thing. I mean, let's be realistic, so they, let's get the information from the sheriff, let's get it moving next week, and set some dates up. Because we're having to do it on multiple dates to get everybody, yeah, you know, to get everybody.
And then our emergency preparedness plan from J H Consulting, that they're working on, should be together compared on.
Right, right.
The more paper and educational component.
I mean, it's not, I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you, I could teach you active shooter training at this moment. I'm not certified, but I've done it enough times. You know, I can tell you what to do, given your situation. All right, so let's do that next week.
Okay, it's just a, Nate, can you initiate?
What we, yeah, all we need is the officers that can do the training for us, and we'll just get a schedule set up for each officer.
And I have been trained with Alice, I have.
Yeah. Up at the school.
Yeah.
No, it's just something we're wanting to do with just county employees or county and Supreme Court. Like.
Well, we will, we will offer to them if they.
When we met at the nine-one-one center, Shaffer attended that meeting, and he was very well in favor of any cost that we incurred, and he wanted his employees to go through that. So I think that that's something that once Nate gets with the sheriff and gets everything mapped out, he can link the judge in and.
Yep.
They do get trained by the Supreme Court, but only like every, I think my mother told me, every, like, it's been five years.
And I really think that it would be beneficial that, once we get some sort of training accomplished with our, our large county employee base and the Supreme Court employees, I think it's beneficial that we look at maybe bi-yearly or quarterly to roll in new employees that we might acquire. And that would involve on the sheriff and filing to just.
If we have people capable in the sheriff's office to do that, then they can just automatically implement it.
Kind of part of like a new employee.
I would agree with you, anytime a new employee, just have it every six months, and then just cover it. We don't get that much turn, but I, I would agree with you, at least every six months, just have it out there and just have any office and say, what, just get a list of new employees in the last six months, okay, they're gonna get a train.
It's just good HR, you need to know. Get all your paperwork done.
All right, that brings us down to spyglass.
Okay, Nate, you want that?
Explain what spyglass does, I've read this multiple times, but I think I understand it. And honestly, I understand there's really no cost until they show that they've created.
So basically, the long and the short of it is, spyglass takes, for lack of a better word, a magnifying glass to your telecom bill.
It takes spyglass?
Yeah, well, they, they would, you would, you would think, they, they talk about it as a magnification sort of thing, so I'm gonna go with that. But the, the idea is, when you, when you look at a telecommunications bill, you're not actually looking at sort of the back end of all the complexities that are built into that.
Right.
How they determine the fees and how that's done. And what they do is they sort of take a critical lens to this and look for places in which either you have been overcharged, which they find roughly about sixty percent of the time, or ways that you can save money.
By changing this service or changing this or.
Yeah, by, by slight modifications, or one of the biggest issues is you are paying for phones and lines that you are no longer using and haven't been using.
Oh, that doesn't surprise me.
For a period of time. And what they do is they produce a report for you. All of this is free of charge. The only thing that's required is that you basically give two months' worth of your bills, because it is required by the telecommunications carriers to be able to provide this information to a resource like themselves. We could probably ask for it ourselves and get buried in stuff we really wouldn't understand, but they're sort of the experts in the field here. And so what they do is they put together a report, and they say, this is what you can save. This is what you're currently looking at. And they have a fee structure set up in accordance to that. If they, if you're gonna get a big check back from a carrier for recovery, then they're gonna request half of whatever that check is. If you're gonna have monthly savings, what they're gonna do is they're gonna request that, whatever that monthly savings would be, times twelve, for an entire year. After that year, you're off the hook.
Yeah.
What that costs you to even receive, the report that they do, is completely free of charge.
All right.
You only, as the, the letters will indicate that you have in front of you, your agreement with them is only if you decide to move forward with any of their recommendations. If you.
No cost recovery, you have to pay them.
Well, the cost recovery, but, but that's only if you decide, you could turn that down.
Yeah.
You don't have to take any, you could be like, oh, well, great, there's a thousand dollars sitting on the table, but I would rather leave it.
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
You only pay them, you only pay them if you implement what they suggest.
If you implement one of their suggestions, that you have right of refusal at any point in time. Do, and I've had a few meetings with them, I, I brought Commissioner Thomas in on another meeting, just for, just for, for their pitch in terms of getting an idea. And, and the fact of the matter is, I don't know a whole lot about our carriers and whether our carriers are sort of second-tier sales individuals of other carriers. And I don't know what the margin would be on that.
You do have that, like, all your.
It's very common.
A lot of your internet providers in the area, they pull their internet from another major carrier, and then just put it out on Pod Rock.
Yeah.
I do not, just, I do not have a problem with this for the simple reason is, it doesn't really cost the same thing to begin with. And it doesn't have a cost associated with it unless they find us some savings. Yeah, so in my opinion, it's a no lose.
Yeah, and we, I couldn't find any other counties in West Virginia, this company is from Ohio. A lot of, well, actually, the Board of Education in Preston County uses spyglass. The known county governments in West Virginia that I know of, there may be a couple, but county governments across the United States use the spyglass, and there doesn't seem to be any issues. And the telecommunication companies seem to have an eagerness to work with them.
Yeah, yeah, there's no grand animosity there at any level.
So there, I guess we have, we have two different things. We have the agreement, and then we have an authorization to access telerecord, provider records.
So it's basically.
Spyglass can do research on behalf of us.
And, and the way the process of work is, the moment these are received, they actually create a portal for us, so we're able to just scan and. Yeah, so there are no emails attached. It's almost like a. Drag and drop, like, it's exactly like a Dropbox.
I should, I should say, we sent this to the prosecuting attorney's office, and our prosecutor, J H, Jay, had noticed.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Okay.
I, like I said, I have to read it again over the weekend.
So unless somebody else goes.
I don't, I don't see an issue.
I'm in a motion and report.
At this time, I need to approve the agreement with spyglass for a snapshot, snapshot audit. This would be between spyglass and the Preston County Commission. Do we want to do a second motion for this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll authorize the president to sign the agreement.
Authorize the president to sign this agreement.
I will second that motion.
Second to sign this spyglass agreement, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm moved to approve the letter of agency authorizing spyglass to have access to our total provider records and authorize the president of the Preston County Commission to sign the form.
I will second that.
Second to sign this letter of authorization. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Let's do this to you.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Let's just, yeah, two, one.
See, yeah, it was the Preston County Board of Education School levy. And all of you should have a copy of this in front of you.
Yeah, I, I saw it when they emailed it to Linda, I guess they see, see this one.
They did.
So I read it. I already got phone calls about it.
So my understanding, and Linda can help correct me if I'm wrong, is that what we, their board has already approved everything as of the twenty-eighth day of December. And then all we would need to do is allow us to be put on the ballot. So my understanding would be, we can simply just make a motion to approve.
That's all we have to do is.
No, there is an order.
Oh, there's an order? Ah, okay, gotcha.
And normally, the Board of Education would prepare this order. So this is a sample.
Okay, so we have to do this? Yeah, no, that's why I was, okay.
So this is an example of what it looks like.
Okay.
And then, then attach two of this to the.
Okay, each commissioner?
The president.
Just the president or the commissioner? Is that something that I should produce, and then we can just do it the next?
Well, are you gonna, you know, do have their ballot?
I have.
Well, this is an order.
Yep, it's an order.
They actually have their order here.
Is it ordered so that the sheriff, that you all can sign?
It doesn't say that, it's saying it is a.
For consideration for education in Preston.
For consideration for education of Preston, of the county Preston being an opinion level, maximum level of term, blah, 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 blah.
Is that that order has to be a record?
Yeah.
That you allowed it to be.
And is it in a specific form we have to make it?
We just.
I think it's just. Yeah, I think that's all we have to do. Just accept it. We accept the order as presented.
Because we don't have any order to change the order now that we don't.
So I.
This is all the legal. There was another, there was another, but I mean.
The order just makes us aware that it's going.
So at thi- at this point in time, that.
You're, you know, you're approving that.
We're just accepting it.
Just accept it.
It's not our choice. We don't approve that. They don't have that.
But you will, I just want you to know that there's a timeline of events that have to happen in order for this.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is I think it shouldn't be a problem for us to do it today and just be done. Because if there's an accept, if all we're except doing is accepting the order, we have it in front of us, so on the agenda, so it should.
The order must have happened. The order is need to part, go to make meetings and get everything in line.
Oh, I know. You have, we have to do it in a certain way, otherwise it can't be done.
It's very, very rushed.
Right.
But Don's saying we should have no issue accepting the order that the Board of Education repaired to begin the process today.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's.
It sounds like in the, in the previous.
But you don't have any, but we need that signed document to have the order.
Yeah, see, we don't have the, so what, what?
Will they sign?
I have um Angie Gartner's cell phone number and.
What do you, no, you mean, who needs to sign? Because they've signed it.
The commission signed it.
The commission will sign.
Right, the commission signed it.
Oh, okay, now.
So this is just like the back page of.
Okay, yeah.
And this was the front page.
Well, can we get this prepared and get it so we can have it for next month, next week?
I don't know that we can push it back that far. That's what we need to find out. Um, Brad's mother passed away.
Yeah.
Um, so we can contact Angie. Why don't we just put this to the end of the meeting and we'll recess at the end and see what we exactly need to do. Because I don't wanna not take action that we need to, that's on something time sensitive.
Okay, sounds good.
And we, and we don't know the timeline.
Send that to Angie so she can see that.
Yeah.
Well, let's see if the women took me into the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Let's give that back.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I know they did this late. They should have already had this on, if they weren't on the May, they should have already had this done. But I can't, I don't, I can't tell them what to do.
On that, on you, Mr. Ray.
Alright, well, we will, we will move on.
Oh, wait, we have one more thing.
We have one more thing. Uh, we got an email um basically requesting um reappointment of board members for the Preston County Parks and Recreation. Um, so Carl Urban, Jennifer Kelly and Kevin Dixon for three-year terms, retroactively to start January first, twenty twenty-three, because I guess we missed them last year.
Yeah.
Um, and this is expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Deborah Deans, Sarah Su- uh, Serrino, uh, for three-year terms commencing on January first, twenty twenty-four and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we received a message just asking if the Preston County Commission would approve uh the reappointments of the individuals listed um as well as the, to date for January first, twenty twenty-three, as well as the reappointment of the individuals dated January first, twenty twenty.
They just had a meeting Thursday night, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and usually they'll tell us ahead of time, they're gonna reappoint somebody.
Yeah, but there's, and then my understanding from this process is once we agree to the, the appointments and reappointments or stuff, then what we're able to do is send out letters at that time.
Well, I know, I know all those people and I've seen, we all know seeing the great work that they have done. I have no problem approving this reappointment of these folks. So at this time, I uh move that we reappoint Carl Urban, Jennifer Kelly and Kevin Dixon to three-year terms, retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-three and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Deborah Deans and Sarah Serrino, three-year terms commencing on January first, two thousand twenty-four and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Second, I just want a second to reappoint these members to the terms. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
You were actually supposed to have a race Saturday for the cartoons. I still, I showed a burber race, but I just went ahead and ran it. Um, they had it on the Northern Rail Trail. They were gonna have a five K.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
But it was snowing early, icy.
Yeah, because we signed up for that.
Yeah, so this year, just so the public knows, and if you could maybe hop on their Facebook page, Preston County Parks and Recs, and check it out. They are having a point series for um races. Um, a lot of them are five Ks, but they're having a race every year. I mean.
Every month.
Every month.
Yeah, they had one, the New Year, New Knee kickoff.
Yeah, the New Year, New Knee is gonna be rescheduled for this Saturday.
Yeah, let's see where that was canceled.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have one each month and then they have a.
So that should be really good. I'm gonna try to run every one of them.
And they have a program where you can run each week with them or walk as it may be, five K to get up to that. So. Cause I spoke about, I'll do that.
Keep it running.
I don't know about that.
Consider how it's done.
Anyway, alright, enough of what we am and.
It's me again. Uh, excellent. Good morning, all. We will start my report today with good news in the world of the animal shelter.
I saw that news.
We have found our new dog warden, John Dowell the third, comes to us after decades of work in the retail space, most recently at Tractor Supply, where he helped coordinate donations to the animal shelter itself. We are excited to welcome him to the shelter as our new dog warden. John's start date is effective for February first, twenty twenty-four at a salary of sixteen dollars an hour with a probationary period lasting until the first of May, twenty twenty-four. Happy May Day to everyone. This is a non-exent position, and at this time, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the hiring of John Dowell the third as a new dog warden for the animal shelter at a starting salary of sixteen dollars.
That motion to approve this hour?
Um, at this time, I need to approve the hiring of John Dowell the third for the position of dog warden. Um, his start date will be effective February first, twenty twenty-four. Um, his salary rate will be thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, which comes up to sixteen dollars an hour, contingent upon a three-month probationary period.
I will second that motion.
I just want a second to approve the hiring of Mr. Dowell. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. He didn't, I think that was a good news on us all.
Yeah.
I, I was in the interview and I think he will be a very good fit.
Good fit.
Yes. It was a very good interview. We were very pleased um with the quality of the candidate.
Zoom.
Yes. Uh, the second item in the report is the notice of equalization of assessments, legal notice, that we need to put in the paper for two consecutive weeks. What you will see here are the official dates for our Board of Equalization meeting uh that you can see outlined here. Um, and all of this is, uh, and all that is necessary at this point is to have the commission make a motion to approve the Class Two legal notice for the required publication for two weeks of both the Preston County News and the Preston County Journal to announce the time of our hearings. And so I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve this legal notice so that we can begin with the process of holding these hearings.
Yeah, a motion to approve this legal notice so we can do our hearings for the board of equations.
Okay.
Second, I just want a second to approve and post this legal notice, Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
The third item in our report is a letter to the Director of Property Tax for the West Virginia Department of Tax and Revenue to allow the assessor to keep the land books open until February sixteen to allow for any ne- needed assessment and appraisal changes. At this time, therefore, I humbly request that Commissioner Samantha Stone make a motion, seconded by Commissioner Hunter Thomas, to approve the letter before you, authorizing President Don Smith to sign so that we may report this action to the Property Tax Division of the West Virginia Department of Tax and Revenue.
At this time, I move that the two thousand twenty-four land books and personal property tax books remain open for changes through February sixteen, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. On floor in a second to approve the property and land books open for changes from February sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
The fourth item I have on the agenda for us today is a budget revision and the only budget revision for today. Um, in anticipation for the completion of the sheriff's office renovations. Panhandle is making very good progress. We are pleased. All the plaster and primer will be completed by the end of this week and painting in the stairwells and stairs where the inmates are moved, being completed by the end of next week at the latest. Hopefully, as well as the floors downstairs, being completed by no later than the end of next week. Um, that takes us to somewhat of a sticking point, and that is Edison on the electrical uh that we are still waiting on. But in terms of panhandles, sort of corner of the pie directly, they're looking to finish up well before the end of January.
Edison isn't gonna interfere with any of the working areas at all.
No, no, Edison will not interfere, but we, we'd like to get this buttoned up as quickly as possible.
And I mean, yeah, unfortunately, they're at the mercy of the subcontractor, which is what it is.
Um, as we wait for the insurance company to deliver on items like the fire alarm, which should be fully colored, and other items we are haggling on, not to mention the cost of additional change orders we made that were a necessity for the project to be completed correctly, we find ourselves at a point where it would be prudent to simply move money out of our contingencies and into the line item for the flood services to the tune of eighty-five thousand dollars to help serve as a stopgap until the final insurance payments are made, as well as allowing for any additional unforeseen but necessary costs that may arise. After much deliberation, it is at this point where I think we are the most financially prudent to move to allow for no more delays in completing this work in the sheriff's office. And so I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the budget revision as properly presented before the commission today under the caveat that as soon as the money arrives back from the insurance company,
It goes back.
It goes immediately right back in.
Gotcha.
Okay, at this time, I need to approve the budget revision as percentage of efficiency.
I will second that.
I just want a second to approve this budget revision. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I figured that's where you were going with that, since it's short money.
Yep.
Thank you. It's where you're on during.
Uh, no, no problem.
We're gonna have to help money out.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're getting, I got my dukes up. We're ready, ready to go. Um, just a quick note of importance. Uh, there has been a move and we have already contacted local media on this as well as our opioid settlement fund work session, uh, which was tentatively scheduled for tomorrow. Has now been moved to, uh, well, it wasn't tentatively scheduled, it was scheduled for tomorrow, has been moved to February first at eleven-thirty AM uh due to some sad uh family developments for one of the commissioners, as well as the fact that during our first meeting of the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, there will be a discussion on opioid settlement programming. And so what we would like to do is sort of have that beforehand, we meet to discuss possible uses for these funds.
Right.
Um, and so this is just a sort of FYI notification that that meeting has now been scheduled to the first of February at eleven-thirty AM here in the commission meeting room. That takes us to the next document in your packet, which, as we discussed with the commissioners previously, yesterday afternoon, we received the following letter from Governor Justice about our second round of funding for the County Fire Protection Fund in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, bringing the total of this fund to a little bit over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I know we have discussed formulating our plans for this funding and the need to distribute this funding as quickly as possible. So I would ask the commission for greater guidance on how we should begin to proceed to the next steps, noting that it isn't clear yet exactly when we'll be receiving the second round of funding.
I think, I mean, we received fifty-seven.
Correct.
Have a hundred and twenty-four once we get to sixty-seven. So I, I think it's very important that we take a look um at the legislative level and see exactly the money was lobbied for by departments, by fire departments. And I believe that we need to look at fire department, uh, the legisla- I think we need to look at the legislation and say, what was the money intended for first? And then uh look at how we wanna disperse it to our fire departments in the county.
I knew it was intended for fire departments. There may be a loophole in it for other emergency agencies. But I say we just leave it at fire departments. It is the County Fire Protection Fund. That's what it's called.
And EMS has money coming in for this.
From the salary.
Right. Even in the letter, here's what the governor says. It's important to bolstering our fire departments and emergency response teams. He's not saying EMS services is paying emergency, but emergency response team is usually a fire department.
Yeah, we're dive teams.
Dive teams and stuff like that.
The fire departments in our county.
Here's, the only thing I request, the we, I looked and I don't know if I lost it or what, the actual, what we can use, what the fire departments can use this for.
I did, my, my general understanding is it's pretty.
Well, I think, okay, that's what I want to do, is fly over greater, greater guidance. Does it?
That being the case, then.
It's pretty broad.
Then that being the case, then we have, you know.
I think that's really up to the fire association to determine.
And that's, and that's what I like to do, is us to send a letter to the fire association saying, what would you recommend? How much money to each of the departments or what do you wanna do with this? If they just wanna put it in the fire association pool for training or whatever, that's completely up to them. But something from them saying, this is what we wanna do with it, whether it's give each fire department, you know, five thousand dollars and then the rest goes and their money to hold on to or whatever, and then we'll take it from there.
And I think we're having requests, I think we can do that, that I've spoken with a couple of different fire departments or they reached out to me. And I think there's gonna be a request come in, and I don't know if this will be the majority or just certain fire departments, that that we distribute it based off a call volume and not evenly um to all fire departments like the levy. So there's two different options there. And I mean.
Well, and, and there again, that's why I'm saying, I want something.
Leave it to the.
Leave it to the association to tell us, this is how we want it distributed.
I like that. That's a good idea.
And so send them a letter, just send the association a letter saying that, unless you guys are disagreeing with me, send them a letter saying, we will use your recommendation. So it's on them, and then we, as soon as we get that, we'll get it distributed.
Now, Nate, you're the.
I'm the secretary, so I.
Wait, have you guys had any dialogue on?
Um, we were just waiting to see what, if you guys were gonna put that option in our lap or if it was going to be divided between us and EMS. So now that I have that to run with, then I can give you the information.
And I think that when you send the, the email to the association, I think CC and all the chiefs in the counties, if they're aware of the intention, loops everybody in, because I don't know if all of them attend regularly to your fire association meetings.
But being instead of staying out saying that this is going to be discussed, we encourage everyone to attend.
Yes.
Yeah, there's an examiner from each fire.
Because they all need the products, if, if the majority say, this is how you guys wanna, that's what we're gonna go with. Because then it's, you know, it's basically your determination.
And, and we have to also keep, when we do that, we have to keep in mind what the money's intended for. So I think reaching to the legislators to learn exactly what was lobbied for and why the decision was made is super important.
Yep. But I think that's the best course of action for us to just let you, the, the fire association, the fire departments say, here is where we're gonna go with.
Nate, if you could drag the letter up and then email it out or take a look and roll with it from there.
You're crossing off everything I had on my list to talk about, so keep going.
Actually, that takes us to our final, and everyone will be glad I would be leaving the stage, the final item under miscellaneous correspondence, which is a necessary housekeeping item regarding the authority to use the signature stamp of the president, limiting that use to myself, the other commissioners, and when directed by the president, Angie Wessel, um, our assistant extraordinaire. Uh, I therefore request that the commission make a motion approving the use of this president's signature stamp by the aforementioned individuals, authorizing the president to sign the memorandum.
So moved.
Second, I just want to say to offer as a use of the signature stamp, Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes. How we just have to make sure we don't put it upside down.
Alright, if we wanna get through our comments, I do have a uh.
All right, if we want to get through our comments, I do have a, Angie Parker has responded to me and is free to a call before we
Okay, want me to call now?
Let's go ahead and do our stuff that way.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and start, Hunter, I'll let you go ahead and then I'll let you finish up.
Well, I, I don't have a whole lot today. I would just encourage you, Jacob, to reach out to Preston County Parks and Rec and talk to them about the new and exciting stuff they have going on. And that's mainly all I have for the question. Haven't had any meetings over the past week or anything like that. All right.
We had a work session last week that we canceled for the 3D vehicle policy, I'm sorry, not vehicle, the vehicle policy.
Vehicle policy.
Um, stuff, so we do need to get that rescheduled, and I'm suggesting that we do so January 18th at 9:00 a.m. as a Thursday.
If we
9:00 a.m.
So we have been reaching out to Patsy Kearns to get her final legal opinion, which has already been given that people wanted to verify, and she has not reached back out to us.
She has not been responsive to the email.
I would just like to get that on the radar and then
Yeah, I agree.
Hopefully, we will hear from her. It's my opinion with the fringe benefit policy that there doesn't need to be a work session because it's a law. And there really doesn't need to be a policy. If we want to have a work session on the vehicle policy, that's a different story that the fringe benefit policy is pretty cut and dry.
It is, but we have said in a previous meeting that with one, the other fit, so we were kind of moving that together.
And it, it really is, not so much a work session per se, it's, it's communication issue.
Communication.
It's to make sure everybody understands exactly.
Now, do we want to, do we want to make it a special session so we can take action and be done with it? I mean, we don't have to take action if we make it a special session. That just seems like a better fit. That's my opinion.
Well, since it's already passed when we were wanting to table it to the 16th because of time and everything getting pushed, you know, I don't have a problem with us doing it as a special session. Just see as it draws near so that you're in your window of when you have to get posted.
That's fine, that's fine. We can be prepared with that day and be done with it.
I'll get, we'll get that, 9:00 a.m., right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, actually, let's go ahead, just because weather has been a real journey lately. Can we just do 9:30?
I was gonna say, let's go to 9:30, just be on the safe side.
Hand, hand, don't hurt him.
We'll reach out to Patsy, and then we need to try to get ahold of, what's his name, Tom?
Driver.
John Driver, yeah. These IRS agents are like trying to get, well, of course, they get ahold of you, and that's just what you, you're trying to get ahold of them, and it's very hard, yeah.
All right, um, and then tomorrow starts the legislative session in Charleston. I want to encourage anybody and everybody to advocate for all things Preston County and what the needs that we have. You know, we've, I've been in a lot of discussions, conference calls concerning the needs for childcare and other major things in, in this county. And so it's just important that you stay in the loop with your legislative.
And make sure to catch them, cut them a break during this legislative session.
Well, and, and pay attention, because a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts in their jobs, and when those bills are moving through, they might not know that there's an issue because there's so much going on. So if there's something that is on your mind, don't tuck it under your hat. We need to get it addressed. And we three can certainly provide a platform. If you don't want to do it, we can, we can do that. So that's very important. I was notified yesterday that there is a bill concerning farmland protection, and I serve on that board, and I can tell you every farmland protection board in this county or in the state is jumping stiff-legged because Berkeley County, they're wanting to take the protected forever in the farmland protection and turn it into a 25-year protection because they want to then take the property and sell it off because they know, they, I think, I'll keep my mouth shut, but that's wrong. When you enter into those agreements, it should not be changed, and it would affect a lot of people in Preston County who work very hard to, to, to have a great thing going here.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of that, absolutely.
So the, the senator's name is Jason Barrett, and if you would like to reach out to him and send him a letter?
Yes, currently, and then, and the reason that is, I can tell you why they're doing it is because they, they want to develop all the land. Well, their easiest way to solution is just, just ban their farmland protection agency within their county and be done with it.
I think they just need to stay in their land.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's a hot topic, and we need to really reach out.
When was that in, yesterday?
Not yet.
And the, the bill, but this is the dialogue that's going. They, our, our legislative leaders in Charleston, their session starts tomorrow, but they're already there in meetings and going through a lot, so.
And how would they, even like, okay, in Berkeley County, the land that has been in their farmland protection,
You can't.
Would the landowners owe money back because they worked in
Well, it's only gone to court once and they lost. They tried this before, but they're trying it again with a different angle.
Like, that would be really sticky.
Well, here's the thing, and I agree with you, because anytime, because I was on the board before you were on the board, when there was a change in that easement, the farmer had to re, the person who owned the property had to reimburse the farmland back for the amount of land that they disturbed, is the best way to say it, that was no longer protected. So that, whether it was an acre or two acres, they had to give the money back, so.
Jason, that's, that's a really big deal. That's a really big deal, so I encourage you to reach out to Ladina Tees, our farmland protection director, George Street, which was one of our delegates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to allude to additional information.
Yeah, and the other problem with that, I suppose, I guess, how you go back and change something that was you back before, you know what I mean? Something moving forward. You want to do it moving forward, that's one thing. Because then you re-rate the easements and everything else, and now they get less money or whatever.
Well, that's just stupid.
But I think it's stupid, it's too convoluted, but.
We had it brought to our attention from the Sheriff's Tax Office that there is unplanned property out there in the county's name. And so there was some in the clerk's office, there's some sheriff's office, I think number one, I have some unplanned property.
Nikki, could you confirm that? I thought we didn't have anything.
I asked them, from a listen, I haven't yet been here back from her.
All right.
So we just need to be looking into that if that's the case and get that taken care of. If there's money out there that we need to grasp a hold of, we need to, we need to get every dollar count, so.
Yeah.
And then we have scheduled an elected official and department head summit. We did this last year. It was a great event. Doesn't always bear the fruit that we want, but if we don't keep coming together as elected officials and sharing our attachments and concerns and successes, because we always tend to dwell on the bad, and there are a lot of good things to celebrate as a county. It's just really great to have these roundtable discussions prior to going into the budget process so that we can all be understanding whatever everybody is up against and the good stuff. So that is January 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Economic Development Authority Conference Room. So that has been scheduled. And then also, I learned while I was scheduling an, an event the other day in Mason Town, there's a community center that sits right behind the Mason Town Methodist Church there in Mason Town, where they serve buckwheat cakes and stuff out of. And it is a nice facility if anybody ever needs to rent the space. But on the flip side, every single Monday night, I didn't realize this, but every single Monday night there, they have AA meetings and NA meetings from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, um, that's
If they're on the county of this, there's only been in Preston County problems and struggles.
I didn't realize they were doing it there, so.
Yeah, they've been, they've been there for their points and
So just wanted to get that out there, make people aware that there is things going on in the county where people can seek some help for, for different things. And I think I've highlighted everything on my list for today, so at this time, I make a motion that we recess.
Do you have any?
No.
Oh, sorry, Don, forgot not to. I'm usually in that seat, I'm sorry. I'm usually bringing that to the rear. I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, but we'll wait. I have a couple things. You do appropriate during your, later on, at 11 o'clock, so we'll do that. So that'll take up some of that time on research, and the other thing is I have a, I do have a phone call on Thursday with the National Association of Counties Veterans and Military Affairs, and then next week, we will have Parks and Rec here. I assume they're still gonna do here for the work.
Of course.
They want to do a discussion, well, it's not, it's a work session, discussion about
Yes, but with a couple on Thursday before their meeting, and they were still off for that. They want to discuss our vision for the group, and they want to talk about oblivion of future, I believe.
Possible levy. Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna have it ready for this year, that's for sure, because it's too late in the game, but.
Now, I believe Mon County has a personal recreation levy.
They do, they do, they do. Then, like I referred to before with the opioid money and stuff, we're gonna do that week, defer that to after we go back to Charles, because we will be getting a briefing on the Sunday that we're there about overall capping it out. And then also on Thursday, 25th, West Virginia First Foundation, we're meeting, we're over in Morgantown. And so that'll give us a little bit more input on what we can do and what other resources are there. In a sense, it kind of makes sense to be able to pull money, if we can save what money we have left over out of the money that we received and use that in conjunction with matching money from the overall state money, then we might have a better, better amount of buck, so. And then, as Dave said before, they, you have to be very cautious about, whenever there's money out there, the first thing that happens, everybody walks around like this.
And they're going diving.
And they said, do not, they said, be very cognizant, don't let that happen because you will have every 501(c)(e) thing popping up in all over the world trying to get a thousand dollars from you, or $10,000 from you, or this money from you. And what it does is it deletes it, and then you get nothing. So you're better off to try to, you know, the old adage about putting all your eggs in one basket.
Something.
Is sometimes a bad analogy, but in this case, it makes sense in some ways, because you get more back in the bucket if you do put all your eggs in one basket and this.
Something long and lasting.
Yeah. Exactly, and that's all I have, so at this time, we go to recess.
I will, if I do.
Keep more of that.
Yeah.
You want it ended? You want it ended?
Yes.